Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Wednesday, June 21 Village Board Workshop. I would like to take a moment before we begin to recognize a tremendous loss to the village over the last week. Jack Goldstein, who served as Planning Board Chair, also Code Update Committee Chair for a time and contributed an immense amount as part of the parking committee and as part of the Chamber of Commerce, just as sort of a pillar of the community, passed very unexpectedly last Friday. Our hearts are heavy and we'll take a moment to honor him silently. Okay, and so in Jack's honor, we carry on. First item is the opportunity to request to add or modify agenda items. Any modifications?
I'd like to add an agenda item just to revisit the C Street conversation. I have numbers updated for everyone to review and to continue that discussion.
So I just saw this. I think I'm not sure that any of us are prepared to have a conversation this evening. Maybe you can talk us through your spreadsheet and then at our next session, put this on the agenda. That's okay. So in introduction, we're adding an introduction. C Street proposal. And then we'll continue the conversation. Someone like to second Eliza's request? And Laura, it sounded like you were making a peep, too.
That's right. So I'd like to add an agenda item, approval of bid for installation of LED lighting at the water pump.
Okay, any announcements? I have none. Jeff? You have a question? We have them. They came in. They, I remember it was last week or the week before they came in. They were stuck at the Canadian border for a period of time, but they have cleared. They're at the parking garage. Bugsy is getting bids for installation work, so I can't wait for them to go in. Thank you for asking. First item, an item, hi Erin, is an item I'm thrilled about. As you know, in our last budget cycle, we created a position of Deputy Clerk to take some of the weight off the clerk position, but also to expand the knowledge base in the office and make sure that we had duplicate of skill sets, so people could feel comfortable taking a day off, going on vacation, et cetera. Jeff and Michelle looked at resumes, reviewed them, interviewed candidates, and had the Board of Trustees meet with the two of them. One of them was just outstanding, and the clerk has made a recommendation. Would you like to raise your recommendation, Jeff?
No, I recommend that we hire Deborah Petrowski to the position of Deputy Clerk at a rate of $27 an hour, background and municipal experience, to prove to be a valuable benefit to the Village Board, staff, and residents.
Deborah comes from the city of Peekskill, Village of, I'm blanking, Village of Highland Falls. She's got a ton of municipal experience and will hit the ground running. So any discussion?
I thought she was an excellent candidate, and we couldn't be luckier to have somebody of that caliber and talent and skill set. That's true. There's a candidate.
And for clarity in the record, we did request state-enabling legislation to be able to hire someone outside of the village, and that was approved by the Senate and the Assembly. So would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the hiring of Deborah Petrowski as Deputy Clerk at $27 an hour.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? I'm saying, yes, sorry, I forgot that you weren't there for the interview, Catherine. You're gonna let her. Sure, she's a rock and spray. Superstar. Okay. Over to you, Laura, for approval of, oh, we made it to the agenda.
No, it's two. Oh, two. Okay.
One is installation, one is charger, sorry.
So this is for installation of the EV charging station at Miss Park in partnership with the town. And again, we already have approval for grant plans to cover 90% of installation costs. So we'll pay this upfront and then we'll be reimbursed 90%, and the remaining amount will split with the town. And then, of course, as we gain revenue from the charger, we will split that with the town. So we have two quotes. I did a kind of exhaustive search, tried to get a number of quotes. We ended up and that's noted in MNO. We ended up with two. One is from MCM at $9,000. One is from Burke Electric at $5,992.22. And so my recommendation is that we give it from Burke.
While we're on that, so we roll into the item that you added, that you requested to add relating to lights.
Sure. So, and you probably remember that we became part of the nicer of clean energy communities. We received our first $5,000 grant and committed to use it toward installing LED lights at the sewer and/or water plant. We, again, kind of exhaustive search, we have two bids. One is from Willdam, which is the company previously in the line energy, which did the LED lighting at the highway garage. And they came in with a low bid of $4,464.30 for the water bit for the water plant. That's terribly less than the which was $14,500 combined for the two plants. So my recommendation is that we do the water plant. We'll have a little bit left over that we can hold, and then we expect to receive more of these grants soon, which then we can then turn to the sewer plant.
And this might sort of give us the flexibility to save it and put it for the next project?
Yeah, if it's first $5,000 grant, it's very we'll receive a $10,000 grant that is they're more stringent about what we choose to do with it. The sewer plant would would work, and then we need to think of something else. So I, unless there are any questions, then make a motion to approve the bid for from Willdam of $4,464.30 for LED lighting of the water plant.
So many seconds. All in favor?
And can I actually make an announcement tied to that? So one way that we expect to receive another $5,000 is because of this community campaign to install heat pumps, where we find out from our neighbors that they installed heat pump and we count them up, and when we get to five, then we get $5,000. And I sort of just announced another round of it, so we're gonna do a second round. So again, if you are installing a heat pump or your neighbor is, all we need is a date and the name of the contractor. Jeff is also looking at building permits and if he can buy them too, but we're glad to find out, you know, just from volunteers. And I think it's a quick way for us to get more grants.
What's the time period?
We need to find out whether it starts June 1 or whether it starts when our last campaign started in November. I'll find out when I can report back.
We can also do on the website.
Great.
Identify it pretty quickly.
And actually, I think we'll also, while we're at it, we'll probably do an EV chart, an EV vehicle, the EV electric vehicle campaign, or same thing, we count the number of purchases of EVs in the village, and I think when we get to five, we get $5,000. So the state is trying to incentivize everyone converting and supporting us for getting the board out.
Cool.
So I'll circle back when that starts.
Very much. So we do not yet have the request or the recommendations for parking waivers from the Planning Board. The Village Attorney's Office is very busy with code and other things and is backed up a bit, so we'll certainly accept those soon. I'd like to table item 3C. Last, for this portion of the meeting, discussion of appointment to Hudson Highlands Pure Trail Data Committee. So you'll remember at the May 8 meeting, it was announced, two things were announced. One, that there would be well, part of, really, it's part of the same proposal, that municipalities, each of the municipalities impacted by the pure trail appoint two folks to be part of reviewing the studies that are being done and the data being churned out by the studies that are being done as part of the draft environmental impact statement. And also a stipend for that committee to hire consultants to review data with them. So the trail has asked for nominations. It's my feeling that we should ask for interest among villagers, and I wanted to run that idea by you and then select from resumes received, letters of interest received.
That's a great idea.
They're trying to move fairly quickly to get it going. What do you think is a good deadline for getting letters in?
21st. What if we said the first of next month?
There it is, the 30th. 30th?
Can we include in that some requests for information? So resume, the a book, or a statement about the relevant skill skills and perspectives that they bring to it, some things that we have, some like real evidence to be able to evaluate the candidates. You know, emphasis on the
opportunities of neutral perspectives, or, I mean, I know there's a lot of very hot opinions, but it's hard to not have an opinion in the village, but
It's gonna be hard to get people without an opinion. My larger concern is getting folks with skill set.
Do we know what an annual review, like, because then we can list it out, and then it'd be interesting, it'd be great to have someone who has transportation experience or tourism management. I mean, you know, if we know what they're looking at.
But what we know right now is transportation, but we didn't certainly ask Amy to give us a job description.
Yeah, that'd be great. Also, I maybe already have the time. And if she can package it all, that it's not on.
Why don't we just have her do it? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, they wanted us to just name people, and I said no, that we needed to have a public process around it. So, okay. I will copy everyone on the follow-up communication on that, and then we'll get an announcement out on the website and email blast. Okay. Oh, C Street. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So last week, we sort of just reviewed the proposal from C Street, which was all the Saturdays in August and then weekends, Friday through Sunday from September 15 through November 12. The board had requested actual figures and numbers of like what that looks like in terms of the revenue based on the rates from last year, and we'd also discussed potentially giving a rate hike based on inflation numbers right now. So I did a sort of chart to evaluate that, and also the board asked for the revenue from last year and our budget in both years. So last year, we planned and budgeted for $34,320 in revenue from C Street. They ended up canceling six days, or sorry, five days out of the 26 days that they were scheduled to come, which was sort of a loss of $6,336 in the projected revenue to village. So this year, we budgeted for the amount that we earned last year, so we wouldn't over project, which is $27,984. And the proposal that they're asking, if you include the Saturdays in August, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from September through mid-November, at last year's rates and with a limitation that they can only dock in cold spring, one day of the weekend. The other two days, if we do a three-day route, would be have to be ducking at West Point and just dropping people off here. So with that, the total revenue of their proposal is $37,488.
That's just, that's just September through November.
That's both August and September. So, but if you want it just September through November, it's $31,152. If we were to propose or push to increase the rate based on inflation, and I looked at the inflation calendar calculator, I think I emailed, I can't remember what the source is, but it's like a national inflation calculator. The rate for docked per foot would go from $12 to $13.50, and undocked would go from $8 to $10.25. So that's something for the boards to consider. We want to raise the rates to adjusted inflation. And if that's the case, the revenue goes up a lot, and maybe we don't need to accept as many dates. As for, I think there were a couple, there was at least one public request that we reduced the dates and not spread it out as far, so maybe we don't need to do summer, maybe we don't need to expand this program. So those are just things for everyone to consider.
Okay. Thank you so much for putting this together. Go ahead.
Something, our fee schedule to take right now has what the rates are on that, as does, we have a docking application which takes the rates, so we're gonna change that. We would need to adopt a new fee schedule, and then the board would have to make changes to the application.
And then that would apply, that would apply across the board for all votes, not just C Street.
I think if the last year, then we based it on the, if they're docked here for less than 45 minutes, it's $8 per linear foot and $12.
Okay, well, this is what this is something to sit with, so, and we've just gotten it. So I'll like to table this until our next session and let folks spend time with it, send your email. We can talk about it further. Very helpful. And Jeff, that'll be part of the record after tonight, yeah? Approval of minutes. Any modifications or concerns for April 26, May 3, or June 7?
Nope, no, no, to me.
I submitted.
And those changes have been incorporated.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 26, 23, May 3, and June 7.
All of 2023?
2023, sorry, 23.
Yes. Let's just hang on, let's make sure everybody was in attendance. First one?
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 26, 2023.
Second?
All in favor?
I I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of May 3, 2023.
Second. And I vote aye. I'm gonna motion to approve the minutes of second. So you're abstaining. All in favor?
Aye.
So three approvals, one abstention. Two extensions? No, on this minute, on a session. And not opposed. Okay. Bill, who's got them?
Motion to include the batch 6956, previous year.
So wait, wait, so let's read the
$54,485.83.
Second. Okay, so 23, 24.
I think I'll vote for to approve FYK 23, 24, batch number 657, and the amount of $34,350.356.
Second. All in favor?
I'd like to note the amount of local fees just for the code update, which is what, for total?
Yes, well, when you're making local law, why don't you get it right? So, moving on to public hearing for chapters 76, 104, and 134. We'll start with progress from last week. Water. With us, Ted, thanks, the consulting planner, and John DeJoy as well from a law firm. Hello?
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Progress since last week. So all comments and questions received from the public on chapter 104, signs and placards, and 76, noise at last week's session and in writing afterward, have been incorporated to the next drafts as appropriate, and I'm sorry, for 76 and 104, and I'll walk the trustees through that tonight, those two chapters. Our review of the drafts in detail will serve as the response to those questions and comments. All comments and questions received from the public on chapter 134 zoning at last week's session and in writing afterward have been reviewed by the Ad hoc Committee. They were not substantive, many were editorial, they've been incorporated into the next draft, and Ted will walk the trustees through those changes tonight. And our review of the draft in detail will serve as the response to those questions and comments. The map, the table of dimensions, and the table of uses were revised based on comment and questions. And our review of those documents this evening will serve as the response to questions and comments related to those. The EAF was revised to reflect edits in chapter 134. Ted's gonna walk us through that. The Attorney made comments on our response to the Planning Board. We'll go through that. And all those deliverables that were ready to be delivered to nicer, sort of, work. So tonight, I'd like to start out with the Planning Board response. Jeff may have a paper copy of it. Oh, actually, this is John's. This is all on the website. Paper copies here. Jonathan, do you have this with you?
I'm struggling to open my PDF copy that I have, but if it's on the website, then I should be able to find it there.
I'm just gonna pull it up as a shared screen as well.
Okay, that's perfect.
So.
You can go ahead and speak while I
So John asked us to add in some specifics about referrals under chapter 134 and chapter 21. Those are now incorporated to identify the dates of delivery for drafts which have been done, identify the opening of the public comment period, which has been done. Planning Board's report, just to pull out important, since the Planning Board's report was provided 61 days, 61 days after the draft's done, and then that's where delivered. And with the draft, the draft of PMU, that section, the newest section, had an additional 14 days of opportunity for consideration. Does anyone have any, oh, I'll just talk to the others. There's also links provided to the walkthrough of modifications that have been done in a public session. And then responses to their specific questions, which we discussed all together before. Any comments, questions, or concerns? I would say on page four, there's a link right now that referring to the number of pages for the environmental assessment form, that is now at 54 pages. So what I'm looking for is, this evening is your approval of the the language and your approval to
I think that it's all the main points that were requested to be addressed. A lot of the concerns that were expressed from the Planning Board were expressed by the public, and we've been kind of continuously going through and addressing those.
And we also John also recommended a few more places to cross-reference the conference, so that's been done, input notes down within the text. Got control of the changes? Someone like to make a motion to, this would be except with John's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to accept the draft for trustee review of the response to the Planning Board comments dated June 5, 2023, with John's recommendations.
Second. For the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll get that out tomorrow. Okay, 104. We can pull up 104. 104, sign and placards. But the reminder, we determined to keep the names, so we would not have to make changes where it was referenced in other chapters.
Do you want the red line or the
And if you're interested in seeing this in detail, you can either relocate to a point in the room where you can see the screen, or there are paper copies on the front table. Okay, so if we can drop down to definition, 104.2 for dash two. A little bigger. So under definitions, handbill was removed and notice was defined. The other changes that we're seeing now have been reviewed in session previously, so I'm just going to the new ones under section 104, 3E, 15, which is 10405. There you go. Just small changes to make the language more accessible. Removing some witches. Any sign located on a building that becomes vacant by the language. Under F and G, references made to signs, placards, banners, and notices in relation to posting of those things on public property and consistently referenced throughout F and G. Going on to page 10407, to section 1046. Go down to, that's right there, actually. You're good. That's the introduction to 1046. Taking note that the the districts now referenced in 1046 are B2, B3, B4, PR, the ERC, and the non-residential uses in the PMU. Going down to G is the insertion of guidance related to freestanding signs. I'm gonna read it out. For freestanding signs proposed in zoning districts that do not contain any setbacks within the village's dimensional table, 6B. And the code enforcement officer and the historic district review board, whichever is the approving authority, has the discretion to establish the appropriate setbacks. has the discretion to establish the appropriate setback under the circumstances, so whether it's either not a building or not a, not a defined setback under dimensional code. On page one oh four oh nine. Um, or at the bottom of one oh, one oh four dash eight, just correcting for consistency. Um, political signs and signs containing personal expression, not exceeding a total of four signs per lot and not exceeding a total of six square feet for a period of not exceeding thirty days, and letter and number. And that's it. Any discussion on chapter one oh four by the board?
For reference and improvement and or the chapters that are new.
Nothing. Thank you. Jeff, may I have a copy of?
No.
So, and we'll move on to that, thank you. Any else want to, please, Kathy?
Red line and the draft.
The red line is what, what we're looking, what I'm hoping to look at online, which is what we have up. Uh, very minimal changes, the first is on page seventeen oh three. Under the definition of unreasonable noise. What? That's what? Oh, red line. Um. Correcting an internal reference, seventy-six five. And then uh notes, I did. And then page seventeen oh four, the next page, footnote, another internal reference correction. There you go, that is listed. The renumbering, or did you renumber it? Any discussion or questions or comments? Or? Oh yes, then we're ready for you, Ted, to go through chapter one oh four. I'm sorry.
One second.
One third. Yes, so all I need is Jeff's keys to the screen sharing. And I'll get mine up. Thank you, Jeff.
Oops. Not Ted is the new text?
You know what? Yes, let me, I picked the wrong one, so let me um, let me get this up. Okay. This is the right.
Reference, and they're here in the room and paper.
Okay, can everybody see it? Okay.
Those who are sitting oriented to the screen can see it.
Yes. Okay, so, um, what I'll do is I'll walk you through each of the pages, there's, there's a couple dozen pages that have changes on them. Uh, the first thing is that the draft zoning has been put into the form now, the more formal form of a local law that's required by uh, the Department of State, um, as you know, any local law that's adopted needs to be filed with the Secretary of the State, and they have a specific format that they require uh, for things like zoning law, and so everything you see here, this is now known as the introductory local law, number one of the year twenty twenty-three. Um, there was a correction made in the um, in the top notice about this is a local law to replace the um uh, chapter one thirty-four, in its entirety, originally adopted by the Board of Trustees in nineteen sixty-seven. So, uh, now there's section one title, which is this local law shall be known as the amendments to chapter one thirty-four. Uh, section two is the authority municipal home rule law, um, village zoning law and so forth. Section three is the purpose, which is to incorporate recommendations from the village's comprehensive plan dated January twelfth, tenth, two thousand and twelve, as the vision goals set forth in that plan are still valid. By incorporating the recommendations from the village's comprehensive plan, the village board aims to further protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. The enumeration of purposes is further detailed in section one thirty-four dash one of the proposed zoning amendments. So section four then are the amendments to the zoning code, so this is going to look familiar. Um, this is all of a section in black that has been before you for, uh, for a couple of months now. Uh, table of contents and so forth, um, and I'm gonna go to the history. Um, one of the public comments that we received was to uh, make sure that the history reflected that um, there is a record at village hall or the village clerk's office of the entire nineteen sixty-seven zoning with all of the amendments, the twenty-some amendments that had happened to the zoning law until now, um, and this uh, indicates that uh, the original local law is amended in its entirety. Um, I put a date up there of six twenty-seven twenty-three, or whatever, that, that can change, uh, depending upon when the Board of Trustees decides to take action, but for now, this is a placeholder, uh, but it is local law number one of twenty twenty-three. So this makes clear that a copy of the version of the zoning law that immediately preceded this new zoning law is on file with the village clerk's office, and that amendments after, again, another placeholder, six twenty-seven twenty-three, are noted where applicable. And then the next change, let's see, I don't believe there's anything for quite a few pages, so I'm gonna scroll down here to uh, one thirty-four twenty-six. If you do see um, things when I'm scrolling fast through the pages, these are the changes that you already looked at last week, for instance, changing lowercase lot to uppercase lot where it's capitalized. So, let's see, twenty twenty-six. Um, one of the suggestions that came in, there were a couple of instances in the prior version that um, called multi-family dwellings, which are defined elsewhere, um, multiple family dwellings, so this was corrected from multiple to multi, and that's at a few places within this updated version. The next change is on page thirty-five. Um, again, there was another public comment, um, that it may be impractical to show the, um, the amount of information that's listed in this particular section for the concept plan for the PMU district, um, special use permit, and uh, it, it previously said scaled to fit one sheet, and um, the suggestion here was to add if possible, uh, so that it may go um, to more street, uh, more sheets in the event that there's too much um, information shown on one sheet. Uh, sometimes it does get busy, and those things are, are often, um, plan sets go onto many, many pages long. Um, there was.
Ted?
Yes.
I ask you to, to um, draw out that point a bit, it seems like a minor one, but it, one of the reasons that you recommended initially um, encouraging a single page, um, or a single sheet um, was to ensure that the entire site plan would be visible in one place. Um, so that was the goal of establishing as one sheet, obviously, you're not going to have every scrap of information that you need to have about a particular application on a single sheet, but to be able to have a cohesive, single sheet reference for the public when the concept plan proposal is provided.
Yes, exactly, because the concept plan, um, it's defined already as an illustrative sketch plan, so it's not a detailed, fully engineered site plan, um, such as what, what would be required for preliminary site plan approval or final site plan approval, um, which is very specific, um, some of the site plan sets go on for dozens and dozens of pages if it's a very complicated site, um, showing not only um, existing conditions, but also grading plans, stormwater pollution prevention plans, uh, landscaping plans and so forth, and so oftentimes it does, but in this case, the concept plan is, uh, the concept here is to create a, a sketch plan and to show as much information as possible on one sheet. Okay, um, page thirty-six, there was a, um, there was quite a lot of discussion about um, the, um, the contamination of the Marathon property, um, there were protections that were um uh, were incorporated into the language for uh, the PMU district. Um, to reinforce that, um, there's also within the phasing um, that the necessary components to ensure protection of natural resource and the health, safety, and welfare of the users of the PMU district and the residents of the surrounding area. So what's been added here, um, you can see this includes a plan, all right, um, but this now has been reframed as a written plan that describes how development and phasing will fully comply with all requirements for new construction set forth by the US EPA in its most recent five-year report for the Superfund site and any additional directives imposed by New York State's Superfund program. So it makes clear that um, this is required, uh, this is not something that the, um, the village has any control over, the US EPA, because of the Superfund status of the site and the New York State Superfund status of its site um, are gonna be controlling here, and the recommendations that they, uh, or the requirements that they impose on any new development will need to be followed in the concept plan, uh, and that includes in the phasing plan as well. There was also um, a discussion about the transportation, transportation studies, um, and um, there, I think there was um, support for ensuring that whatever transportation studies are carried out by the applicant, that there is sufficient um, uh, review with the village's own professional transportation or traffic engineers uh, to ensure that whatever the applicant submits, in this case, is going to be uh, looked at from the standpoint of the village's uh, best interests, um, to avoid congestion in the village, to ensure that uh, the scope of the traffic studies that are undertaken, um, the kinds of details that are gonna be required uh, as, as far as studies are concerned, the potential for alternatives to the action, uh, and, um, and adequate mitigation measures to avoid adverse transportation impacts to the proposed concept plan, uh, development, and that such studies, uh, shall be subject to an independent thirty-third-party peer review process by a qualified professional traffic consultant retained by the planning board. And that is, uh, and the reference here is in accordance with chapter fifty-seven, that is the village's fee structure that um, would, uh, would allow for the village to, um, to be able to pay its own professional traffic consultant out of an escrow account that has been established for that purpose. Let's see. There was a change here, uh, the planning board, uh, may, let's see, there, there was, you know what, I'm actually um looking at this, and the planning board may modify the required number of parking spaces specified in section one thirty-four seventeen M of the zoning law to be consistent with the recommendations of the transportation, um, management plan, so, um, the reason why um, this was changed, uh, the planning board may require, uh, uh, you know, actually, I'm not certain what was listed here before.
It had been reduced, and, and the public comment was.
Yeah.
Modified, so that you have the capacity to change in either direction, depending on the outcome of the traffic.
Correct. May reduce the number of parking spaces, and so, thank you, Kathleen. Um, and in this case, in the event that, um, parking spaces would need to be adjusted upwards, the planning board would have that ability to do so, not simply to reduce them, so. Uh, let's see, the next one, um, this makes clear, um, that the public engagement plan, that is the responsibility of the applicant uh, and the planning board to review that and ensure that, um, uh, members of the public are properly engaged in the development of the concept plan. Um. This had a reference to, um, stake, stakeholders, uh, shall be included. Um, and this includes not just the neighbors, but specifically along Roth Street, Kemble Avenue, the Boulevard, Constitution Drive. Um, so those are now specifically noted in here, yes.
Could you read that, could you read that out?
Certainly. Additional outreach to stakeholders by the planning board shall include encouraging participation by neighbors, including adjoining residential property owners along Rock Street, Kemble Avenue, the Boulevard, and Constitution Drive. The owners of the West Point Foundry Preserve, Haldane Central School District, emergency service providers like fire and police, water and sewer services, other agencies responsible for issuing approvals for the proposed development such as DOT, um, and others identified through collaboration with the applicant. The developers of the concept plan are strongly encouraged to seek community and agency involvement in the project design and planning at the earliest stages of the project review process. And I think it's worthwhile to know, you know.
Sorry, it's, I know, having been on your side last week, I understand how hard it is to have conversation with somebody in the room. Um, so pardon me for speaking over you. My concern with this correction is that now it seems as if only the folks who live on those streets are, are considered stakeholders, so I'm wondering if it, if it is, uh, if it is better to phrase it this way, shall include, oop, you moved, so I can't see it. Can you go back up to that paragraph?
Yep, there we go.
Shall include.
But not be limited to.
Patient by, by residents and in particular neighbors, including adjoining residential property owners, and do you get what I'm saying?
Yes.
So that doesn't seem like it's just those streets, we, we want we want all residents to, to be stakeholders, but to Michael's point, calling out specifically the folks who live adjoining.
Yeah, well, sometimes, um, it, it does help to include language like shall include, but are not, but it's not limited to.
Not limited to, that's better.
Yes, yes, so I, I will add that. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, um, there were a couple of, uh, references here that needed to be corrected and added, um, to the, um, parking locations. Um, so there were three different sections of the code that does restrict, um, parking locations uh, such as garages and surface parking, and so those are now, uh, have now been added to that, so those were existing sections of the code that it now refers to. Um, and also just to, to reinforce, um, that the onsite transportation facilities have been planned and designed to provide safe and efficient accommodations for pedestrians, bicyclists, and not, uh, and non-motorized travelers. Um, there was a sentence added that the concept plan will include the mitigation measures such as reduced density identified by the transportation studies to avoid or reduce any projected adverse impacts of the development. So this is merely stating something that is stated elsewhere, um, but it does reinforce that um, in, in this case, these are the standards for the special use permit approval. This now becomes a, uh, you know, probably the reference to it in the other sections were sufficient, but this does reinforce it and repeat that, um, whatever mitigation measures are developed as part of the secret review process for the concept plan are now going to be so, um, the planning board would have to make a finding that all of the mitigations have been, um, uh, included in the special use permit. Uh, the next change is on forty-three, here we go. So again, this was, um, this was actually a suggestion of, of John first. This, um, paragraph right here, which is at the end of the, um, special use permit conditions. This was, um, this paragraph was in the intent of the district, but, um, it was not in the actual conditions, so I'll just read it to you, um, so that everybody is familiar with it. The proposed PUD development will proceed in accordance with all applicable determinations, approvals, certificates, and permits of the US Environmental Protection Agency and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, as well as any other applicable federal, state, or regional determinations that redevelopment of the site remains protective of public health, safety, welfare, as well as the environment. So that is in the current, um, uh, intent of the PMU district. It's now been repeated in the actual special. It's now been repeated in the actual special permit condition, so it, there will have to be a planning board finding. Um, that this is being properly, uh, the concept plan is being properly followed in accordance with. The federal and the state super fan, super fund, um, uh, restrictions. Okay, we have to skip forward to page sixty nine. For the next one. Okay, um, the next one is actually a series of, uh, their. Um, their minor modifications to the public notice and hearing process for special use permits. For site plan approval as well as for zoning board, um, approvals of variances. And it pertains to the public notice and hearing, the original, um, version of this had the applicant responsible for. Um, uh, sending out, um, notices to the neighbors. Of the public hearing on an application that's being made. Um, I think the consensus of the working group was that it, um, this has been done by the village, um. Uh, as a longstanding, uh, policy, the village has done its own, uh, circulation of legal notices. Uh, that are required by law for public hearings on special permits, site plans and variances. And so what you're seeing here is language that, um, takes the public notice and hearing. And simply changes it to ensure that the, um, um, the village. Planning board is responsible, largely responsible for that, um, uh, and that there are. Uh, in this case, the applicant will send by certified mail a notice of the public hearing date. And data regarding the special use permit application and location of the parcel. To the owners of property abutting that held by the applicant, so this actually is the, um. Uh, the notice that goes out to the neighbors, um, they do have to provide proof. That the mailings occurred in a timely manner, and that has to be presented to the planning board. Uh, that the, um, the neighbors have been properly advised that there is an application. But the village is otherwise responsible for putting a notice on the village, uh, on bulletin board of the village hall and the village's website. Uh, and as well on a, uh, sign posted along the, uh, the street frontage of the property.
So, so Ted, you are, um, in making those modifications, you are reflecting the process that already. Exists.
That is correct. Okay, um, let's see. I believe that's then, then seventy four is the next page. Okay, um, there was a missing, um, a couple of words that was in the, um, these are the. Let's see, general standards applicable to all uses, um, there was a reference in here. Uh, concerning the conversion of an existing structure from a one family to a family, uh, to a two family. Or from a one family or two family to a multifamily dwelling. And what was missing was the conversion of a one family or two family to a multifamily dwelling. So that's been added to it to, um, to make that correction. Sorry, went by one here, okay, um, this is for. Uh, marinas, um, as authorized under civic uses, again, this is the special permit conditions. For marinas, uh, there was a mistake in here concerning the maximum height. Of an accessory building and accessory structures, it previously said eighteen feet, that's now been corrected to correspond with the. Table of dimensional requirements to fifteen feet. And page eighty is the next correction, um, this is. What needs to be shown on the site plan drawings that are submitted by an applicant to obtain site plan approval from the planning board. Uh, there was a reference in this section to, on the maps to, um. Uh, locally significant trees, but it did not state specifically, um, that they locally significant trees. If they existed on a property would need to be shown on, uh, the actual site plan drawing, so that has been added to correct that.
Ted?
Yes.
Go back to that paragraph for a second?
Sure.
Please? And just hold there for a moment?
Yep.
So I think the, the issue was. Here with trees was how they are identified. Because there is not a, currently a, um. A catalog or a survey of what would be considered locally significant trees, so what do we mean there? And I think the recommendation was to. Um, that that would be, could, would be determined by the applicant in consultation with. The tree advisory board. That's my recollection of the conversation.
Okay, so, um, I think that can be easily added. Um. Locally significant trees include but are not limited to, uh, and we can add something at the end of this, um. In consultation with the village tree advisory board.
That, how, how do others feel about that as a, as a method?
Well, I'm glad that it already, that it includes tree signatures or more in that, or so there's no. Um, debate about identifying larger trees, yeah, I think. We want to try to preserve since it takes so long to, to get them at the beginning, um, so. Um. I guess, I don't, that seems reasonable, I guess the alternative would be for the tree advisory board to. Make a recommendi- an recommendation, uh, rather than like in, uh.
Ultimately, what needs to happen is that that board needs to identify sort of a, a list of. Locally significant, of what we identify as a community as locally significant trees. Until that is done though, this, the placeholder, there needs to be a reference in the placeholder, and actually, now that you've read out. The last sentence, locally significant trees include but are not limited to rare unusual species, et cetera, et cetera, that at least, that at least defines. Better what is meant by that.
So we're looking to add.
At some point.
I would support that, I think that they're the, um, experts on that subject. So I know those significant trees as deemed.
Well, I think what, what, what we want to get here is, um, determined in consultation with. Like the, the planning board in consultation with or applicant in consultation with, I don't know what, I don't know what is less cumbersome.
Um, let me ask, is the, um, village, um, tree advisory board, are they an active board, do they have a?
That's standing board, we have a chapter. Having a local tree ordinance, so, so they're dealing with public trees, I think what's being described here. Is trees on public property being developed, right? So, when we had a local example of this not so long ago. Was, you probably remember this Ted, on the Butterfield site, there was a copper beach that was a distant tree. That was much loved.
Yes.
A tree on public property, but about which the public had concern, on private, on private property, excuse me. A tree on private property about which the public had concern. Um, and accommodations were made in the site plan approval around that. Planning around that copper beach, unfortunately. It did not make it anyway, um, but, uh. That was, I think that's what I think is the origin of, of this point of identifying. Locally significant trees, if they're on private property, ultimately the village doesn't have. Control over them, but recommending consultation.
Well, in, in this case, this is something that would be shown on and, uh, uh, on a parcel of land. That is subject to, um, a request for a site plan approval, so it would involve the applicant. Um, probably if there is a significant, locally significant tree to employ someone like an arborist. Um, that would be familiar with, um, with rare unusual species, um, uh, you know, and, and that sort of thing. So, um. You know, I, 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 I think if the tree advisory board is simply charged with the protection of trees on public property. That may not, um, get you to where you need to go, and maybe we need to make a reference in here to locally significant trees. Um, uh, and, and perhaps, uh, make a reference to, um. Uh, an arborist, a professional arborist that would be able to provide input on that, if necessary.
As we're talking this through. I'm inclined, I'm inclined to leave it as it is right now because. It's, it is, uh. It is most defensible here, lacking, lacking a survey of trees. Question we came across. With ten or seventeen four, a couple of years ago, he called on. The, the rock, the rock face on, oh, Rock Street. And that was not, protection of that was not supported. Because although it was ref- although the natural resources reference before, there was not a survey and listing. Um, of natural resources yet, and the HTRB still needs to do that survey. In this case, we don't have a survey either by the tree advisory board, so I think that we're. At this stage. In the most defensible place to not. To not make reference beyond this, Jonathan, do you have a thought?
Well, I can tell you that in, in my experience, um, and I worked for quite a number of planning boards over the years. And many other codes do have a similar sort of, uh, provision to this where locally. Significant, significant trees are identified through the site plan or subdivision review processes. And generally what, um, you know, sometimes it's offered by an applicant if they're aware of something that's locally significant. Because of size, because of a historic event or, or something like that, but oftentimes when there is a public hearing. And the neighbors find out about an application for, um, uh, for a modification to. A property that might contain locally significant trees, it's going to come up in the public hearing. And oftentimes that, um, uh, that is something that is, uh, people are not aware of until, uh, until they're given a notification. That they're going to lose potentially a tree that, um, may be near and dear to the neighborhood or, or to the village. As a whole.
Logic now, so, so if it is identified, if a tree is identified on a site plan. Therefore, the opportunity for the public to comment is created because it is an element. On the site plan, that's why you're saying identify trees on the site plan, locally significant trees.
Correct.
So if, if. Considering the, the, the comment that was raised, if. Um, if a tr- if a site plan is submitted that does not identify locally significant trees with this language in the code. A neighbor would have the possibility to say, I, I think that copper beach is a locally significant tree, and I'd like the planning board to have a conversation about that.
Yep.
Okay, got it now.
Okay.
The, um, the tree advisory committee develops an inventory of locally significant trees. Do we need to update this, or would it, um, would?
That's a down the road thing now.
Language spice, okay.
Maybe, I think you could, once it existed, you could go back and refer to it, but we don't have it now to move the language in.
We could refer to this, okay, this is the list of locally significant trees, as per.
Okay, we, I think we've, we've beaten that dead horse right into the ground, carry on.
Okay, all right, let's see, eighty six is the next page with a change. Uh, let's see, here we go. Um, okay, uh, this is, uh, this section right here, um, these are the site plan design criteria. Um, and this is a repeat of, um, a section within the, um, residential district. Um, where one of the, one of the things that the village is seeking is to make, um. Building design compatible with building forms, uh, within the, in the community, the historic character of the village. While allowing for innovative innovation in architectural designs within a traditional context. Um, and this is to say that, um, our history. The historic buildings that we have here are important, but we're not looking for some sort of a, a copycat design. Um, if you're putting in a new building next to a significant historical structure. Uh, that we're also looking for innovation in architectural designs, um, and that is a recognition that. Designs change over time and that there may be the need for designs that, um, that have other characteristics. Such as, uh, energy conservation that, uh, may not fit precisely within the, uh, the meaning of. The historic character of the existing buildings, so this is simply an, an addition in here, uh, that reflects. Um, a concept that was already introduced in the zoning law in other, in another location. Okay. All right, let's see, um, I believe the next one, uh, this is for the site plan. Uh, public hearing, uh, public notice and hearing process, this is going to be a mirror image. Of what you just saw for the special use permit, a very similar sort of situation that will take you back to where the village currently. Is now with their public notice and hearing requirements, um, on these pages. Uh, let's see, then we go to page ninety two. Um, this is simply moving, um, a particular provision, we had previously, um, uh. Combined, uh, this is, let me go back up here to supplementary regulations applying to all districts for accessory structures. All right, and, um, corner lots. Then, um, we had exceptions to normal setback requirements where there was actually a duplication of this paragraph. In C and D, so what we did was consolidated previously this paragraph. C became a reserved subsection, so, um, when the working group was looking through this recently. We identified, um. This particular provision having to do with storage of unlicensed or unregistered vehicles. Um, it was in the section under accessory structures, and I think the consensus was. It needed to be in a subsection on its own, so this is not new language, this is simply taking it out of. Accessory structures and putting it into its own subsection. Okay. Now that, let's see, ninety nine is the next one. Okay, um, so, this is the, uh, table of parking requirements. Um, and one of the questions that came up from a, um, from a member of the public was that. Um, what do you do when there is a use that is not addressed by the table of parking requirements? And so what most communities do is they have a provision in here where the planning board. Has some discretion to be able to determine, um, sufficient parking requirements for land uses that. Um, are not listed in table seventeen dash one. Um, and so this is an addition here that there must be reasonable and appropriate off-street parking requirements for uses. Which do not fall within the categories listed be below. They shall be determined by the planning board upon consideration of all factors entering into the parking needs of each such use. Okay. Two. Let's see, okay, this is another change from multiple family to multifamily. Uh, let's see, oh, four. Okay, um, we did talk about this last week, so I'll get you to the next one, alteration of non-conforming buildings. Um, here, there was a reference to, um. A non-conforming building may not be reconstructed structurally altered during its life to an extent. Exceeding in aggregate cost of fifty percent of the fair market, of the fair value of the land and building as determined by dividing the assessed value of the land. And building by the equalization rate unless such, such building is changed to conform with. And previously it said merely the area regulations, so, uh, this is now changed to include with the use in area regulations of this chapter. The next one is for the zoning board of appeals. The next one is for the zoning board of appeals procedure. And this is, uh, again, taking the public notice and hearing process and simply returning it to, um, to what the village currently has as far as how that notice and, uh, of the public hearing, is conducted by the zoning board of appeals. Uh, and I can see a mistake right here, uh, with something that, and this could be because I, I, in fact, I believe this is because this is still the revision mark. So this will go away in the next version when all of these, uh, red line changes have been accepted. And then let's see. There were a couple of changes here. Um, this was, um, formally referred to as the Potomac County Department of Planning and Development of Public Transit. Uh, the correct name is Trans, Public Transportation that's been corrected. The county planning department that was, uh, previously the county planning board, so that's been corrected. Um, and again, another correction here, um, uh, to the, um, uh, village planning board. And I believe there is one more in here. So, um, procedure for amendment. So one of the, um, one of the things which has arisen over, um, the actual, uh, referral of, um, the chapter one thirty-four amendments to the planning board is that the procedure for the amendment process for any amendments to chapter one thirty-four in the future, they must be referred to the planning board for report, but there is no timeframe, uh, within that for the planning board to, um, to come back and, and provide a report to the village board.
There is none. In the current, in the current code, there is no timeline.
Correct. Correct. So the suggestion was to provide a timeframe. Um, sixty days is been, uh, listed here and the, and the new text is unless the planning board fails to render such report within sixty days after its next regularly scheduled meeting following the date of such referral, the village board shall not take action on any such amendment without recommendation from the planning board. Sixty days is the working group's suggestion. Could be thirty days, could be forty-five days. You know, sixty days is a fairly reasonable one because of the, um, the monthly meeting, um, schedules and sometimes the meetings, um, don't overlap that, you know, give the planning board sufficient time to be able to, um, really digest changes that are proposed and to generate a report, you know, especially if they're very busy with applications. At that time, so sixty days was, was suggested here, but that's subject to, um, to village board's, um, pleasure. And that's it. That's the last one, I believe.
On that last one, you know, when we referred this chapter, there was no, there was no definition, and I think it's really helpful to have, to have a defined process or timeline.
Are you comfortable with six days?
Yeah, yeah, are we comfortable with six days? I mean, I think it's, it's hard with, it's hard with volunteer boards. Um, they need the time. And this plan, this was sixty-one days on this, on this response. So it sort of fell out naturally in that way. It doesn't seem unreasonable to me. I've seen forty-five, seen thirty, and sixty seems like a generous amount. Um, and a necessary amount. Others? Anyone disagree? Okay. Um, what other comments, questions, concerns do you have for Ted? Ted, you want to go through the map? First, first, is there anything we want to take up about the text?
Yeah, that's, that's the last of the text. So there's no other changes that are proposed.
Anyone? Okay.
Oh, I'll say I like, um, that there's more specificity on, um, especially on the use of the transportation analyses of what that process looks like. I think, I think we've tried to reduce the number of the, the reliance on vehicles in that area. And so I think my preference would be to keep the word reduce rather than modify for the parking spaces. But I understand that, you know, we haven't, that, that the analysis hasn't come before the planning board. And we don't know which way it will fall. And so giving them the kind of neutral, um, role to, to make changes to the, to parking, uh, you know, I kind of understand the thought process on it, so I'm okay with it. But, you know, I certainly think that we've made other efforts to, um, you know, minimize parking and, uh, and people.
And also allows, it allows flexibility for them to be responsive to what they learn.
Yeah.
And then, yeah. Okay.
Okay. All right. So on, onto the next one, there are a couple of, um, suggested modifications in the table of uses permitted by district. Okay, um, one was to allow multifamily dwellings as a permitted use in the B four district. You can see this different color shading here.
Which they already, it's just, uh, codify what's, what exists.
Correct. Um, there was also considerable discussion about live-work units and where they would be appropriate within the village. They, of course, were, um, recommended by the comprehensive plan to be in the PMU district, um, under a special use. And previously they were going to be permitted in the PMU district. Um, and so this does represent a change that they would have to, um, um, obtain a special use permit in order for a live-work unit to be established within the PMU district. And one of the reasons why is because, uh, a live-work unit is different from a home occupation. A home occupation is somebody, uh, someone that works out of their home. And, um, a live-work unit is, is structured in a little bit different way. It could include, um, some commercial application. And generally live-work units are evenly split between, uh, a workspace and a living space. And so they may have the potential for some, um, unwanted nuisances to, um, to neighbors. And so especially this permit is one way to be able to control those nuisances. There was also a discussion that if live-work units are permitted in the PMU district, why wouldn't they be also permissible in the B one and the B two districts, which are predominantly, um, commercial zones? And that they may be appropriate there by special use permit as well. So those were suggestions of the working group.
Ted, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Example of, of that type of use?
An example?
Yeah.
Well, um, there are live-work units that have been established in the city of Poughkeepsie and the city of Beacon. I'm not familiar with Newburgh, but I know Kingston has got a number of, uh, live-work units. And generally these are established in, um, in buildings where, uh, it's, it's generally, um, you know, could resemble something like a loft building, um, where you have a, a commercial building that, um, no longer has utility as a strictly commercial building and where lofts are created for artists and, uh, craftspeople and that sort of thing to live and work in the same, um, same location. So that's, that's just an example of it. Those are the kinds of things that seem to be in demand in other, uh, communities.
Um, we have one in the village now that was approved by site plan approval, which is thirty-seven Fair Street, which is studio space and living space. She's not, she's not selling out of that space, but she's creating in the space. Right? It's her, it's her studio and her home.
Would it be helpful to, um, to review the definition for live-work unit?
Live-work and, and home occupation so that the distinctions are clear.
Yep. Okay. So a live-work unit is a mixed-use dwelling unit divided into two parts, neither of which is incidental or subordinate to the other. One part for living and the other part for commercial or office functions performed by the person who lives in said live-work unit. Okay. And then, um, home occupation is any use of a dwelling unit conducted for gain, profit, or financial support by a person living in said dwelling unit, which is clearly limited in extent incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for living purposes, does not change the residential character of the property or neighborhood, or have any exterior evidence of such secondary use other than a small nameplate. So the emphasis is obviously on the residential character in a home occupation. Whereas in a live-work unit, it is more of a commercial slash residential space. Where, um, the two parts are co-equal.
Nice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, and back to the table. Whoops. Okay, so, um, that was it on that page. On the next page, senior citizen housing. There was a footnote that was applied to, um, the special use permit in the B three district and, um, it was determined through a comment, um, by a member of the public that, um, that did not apply in the B three district. So that's proposed for deletion. And that is senior citizen housing, especially as permitted to be three district will not be subject to the special condition down here. As senior citizen housing, because previously it said in the B three and B four districts. So what will be deleted there is the reference to the B three district. So this will now read senior citizen, citizen housing in the B four district.
And the reason that's important is that that element of the code, the fifty-five units and all the conditions related to it are baked into that section of code and, and tied very tightly to the, to the site plan approval for Butterfield. So the process that reflects, that reflects that original approval, it was John's, uh, John first advice that, given the interconnectedness between the approval and the code, that that language not be changed at this point, it has been, I guess a question for Jonathan is, so in that time, and since, since that time, the planning board has seen a request to change the last structure, which was to be developed as office and commercial to residential. And I think it's a new, is a new number, four more or six more, Jeff? Do you remember?
We need six residential.
Okay, so it's, it's five or six additional units, um, looking like the consensus in the room is five, someone who lives in that area. So should, should, should this be modified to reflect the that decision that has been made since?
Um, I, I think it's really up to the board, whatever, you know, you feel like makes more sense. I don't think it necessarily has to be.
I think our concern was not, well, the concern of the, of the, of the working group was taking John's advice on not modifying anything that had been part of Butterfield. Any thoughts?
And are you saying that this has been?
This, this, this corresponds to the, to the, this footnote that was part of the original, part of the last code. So it's just a carryover. Once we take out this, that B three reference, there are sixty-five units that Chestnut Ridge didn't apply, that the footnote didn't apply. Um, so this corresponds to the original approval as does all of the code, all of that section of the code, fourteen. One thirty-four, fourteen. So if you modify the footnote, that's the only place that reflects the current reality. And I'm not sure if that's a good idea or not.
But so then there's no, so then senior citizen housing is only permitted by a special use permit.
In that, in that, in the four, we're talking about B four now. So the, the reference to B three is deleted because it should not, it should not have said B three. This is the, the criteria that are laid out here only relevant to Butterfield. They were established specifically for that.
I understand. So there's no change in the fact that senior citizen housing is allowable by special use permit from the B three.
That's right.
There's no change to taking out, it's just taking out all of the particulars of the.
Separating out in the footnote, the Butterfield information from the, from the B three and having the footnote.
Do we define what's the senior citizen housing? So is, or is that a known, it's just known that that's.
So the senior citizen housing that is at Chestnut Ridge, that section of the code was modified in the late seventies to accommodate the development of that housing with federal grant money that subsidized senior housing and, and low-income housing. The modification of that chapter did not, Ted, can you go to that part of the code? We did not change it. We opted not to change anything about B three. The, the recommendation is to not change anything about B three and B four. The reference to senior housing is broad, the reference that was put into the code in the seventies when that development was possible. So there's nothing changing about that text that would change the fact that seniors can live there. It's not a, um, it's not as specific as the recommendations, or sorry, they, the circumstances and requirements that were approved for Butterfield.
Okay, so you want to look, look at the B four?
I'm going to B three.
B three, okay, that's what it was. Yep. Whoops. There we go.
Let's first, let's first look at it there and then go up in that, in the definition, make sure. So, so C, uses under special code permit simply says one, seniors and some housing. How about definitions? And so that is the text that came, that is the text that came to us from the previous code and is not modified for B three.
You mean the standards?
No, I mean definitions at the beginning of the chapter. Laura's asking if we have a definition for senior housing above.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Senior citizen housing.
Go ahead.
Can you read that? I'll, I'll read it to you. Housing facilities restricted to persons at least fifty-five years of age, which meet the special housing needs of senior citizens, limit occupancy of each dwelling to no more than two persons and comply with the quote, "housing for older persons" end quote, exception from the fair, federal fair housing act as amended.
Question that was raised by the member of the public is, well, there are people living at Chestnut Ridge who are not seniors. Correct. Those are folks who are able to live in that housing as per, uh, the, the guidance of the, the federal funding that created that project. So there's nothing changing about that language. They are living there now under the code as it is. There's nothing changing there. What would change there is if, when those tax credits expire, I don't know what the term of them is, thirty, forty years, fifty years, I don't know. I think it's forty years. When those tax credits expire, there is the opportunity, there could be, someone could acquire the site and propose to change that site. Given, given all of the unknowns, it seemed at this time in the, in the discussion of the ad hoc working group that the, the, the safest thing to do was leave that zone as it is and not, not try to muck about. And as we have a longer term, this could be one of the things that becomes part of a, a comp plan update conversation is how we address as a village, how we address senior housing and affordable housing overall. It's part of a larger discussion to the point.
I would say if it's not broken, I'll go back to it.
Jonathan, do you have any, do you have any thoughts there?
Uh, not really, no. I, I don't think I have anything, uh, I would add.
Does what we're, what we're proposing make sense to just?
I think so.
As it is?
Yeah.
Can I ask another question? I'm looking at the table of uses under B three. So none of those, are those consistent with what was allowed under B three? Ted, I gotta go back to it. Under the folder, under the current code?
I don't think there are any changes in uses in B three, right, Ted?
Yeah, B three and B four were kept as is.
So it, I would say this looks like a candidate for a, um, a comprehensive update that it allows for a restaurant, you know, one of the, there's a site plan that allows for a restaurant or restaurant.
That's at Butterfield.
No, is it B four? No, B three also.
Can you, I can't see it, Ted. Can you call out B three?
B three. Red, right here.
Can you call out what they are?
One family, uh, B three, one family dwelling with special, uh, site plan approval, multifamily dwelling, site plan approval. A bank, site plan, business professional office. Health-related facility, hospital, hospital or sanatorium. Uh, let's see, B three, a nursing home, the site plan, restaurant, retail business with site plan approval. Special use for senior citizen housing. A library, municipal uses and buildings permitted, parks and playgrounds permitted, a school with site plan.
And can we go to the 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 definitions of the zones, the purposes of the zones and read out B three? Please? Again, unchanged from what it is now?
Yes, and one of the reasons why we don't have an intent here is because this was one of the sections that was not changed. And in other sections of the code where there have been. Changes, for instance, to the residential district, the PMU district, those now have a intent that has been added from um, from the existing zoning. But not this. Yeah, I think the working group was of the understanding that this would remain the same.
So under under permitted uses are any use permitted in our district with the exception of both accessory apartments and short-term rentals. Neither of which are permitted at B three. So that is a change, the short-term rental restriction. Hospital or sanitary. Sanatorium, nursing home and health-related facility. Under special use permit, senior citizen housing. So that was all. Baked in with the exception of short-term rentals, that's all baked into that code and is unchanged. So the the table of uses Ted then reflects what. Is I did what was laid out as uses. In the original, in the nineteen, whatever it was, amendment nineteen seventy.
That was, yes, that was, that was the concept.
Okay, does everybody understand and feel comfortable with that? Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, um. Let me see if there was any other change here. I don't believe there's any other change to the table of uses. Uh, there was one change that was made. I believe the working group, the consensus was that the prior allowance for the building percent of lot coverage. For the Parks and Recreation District, it would allow, I believe it was twenty five percent building lot coverage. Uh, and I felt that was excessive for a park and recreation area, and I believe there's also public comment on that. So that was reduced to ten percent.
That was response to public comment.
Correct. Okay, and then the zoning map. Uh, and let's see, I'm going to have to reduce this so you can see the whole thing. Okay, Kathleen, I'm gonna, you read the discussion on that because you're much more familiar with the changes between version twenty one and twenty two. So if you could handle that. Would it, would it help if I flip this?
Yes. Yeah, I got, I got one, Jeff, okay. Um. So.
Now I get to, so.
Two modifications? Thank you. One is in the northeast quadrant of the village up along Cedar Street. The cemetery. There, there, there are two parcels on the east side of of Cedar Street spur. One is the entrance to Nelsonville Woods. It's owned by the village with a conservation easement by by village Nelsonville with a conservation easement from OSI. And next to it is. The, the, the new old cemetery. They both were shaded green. That was an error. Now the cemetery is in orange for civic. The other is also in response to feedback, which the. The working group. Thought made sense and we're putting to you, as does this make sense to you, West Bank Street. And a portion of Pine Street. Were older residential neighborhoods. Those are parcels that, if you, if you look at the map, you can see. How the block founded by Pine, Parsonage, Bank and Paulding. At its east side. Was subdivided just like the other side of Parrot Street. To be small lots. The continued development of that lot, when the foundry closed, didn't, didn't proceed. And and West Bank Street was not developed until much later and was developed with larger lots and newer construction. As was the house that fronts on the, on the end of West Bank that fronts Pine Street. And there are two, three parcels on on Pine that are also. Mid twentieth century construction and lot sizes. So on recommendation of the. Of the public and in, in agreement, the ad hoc committee makes that recommendation that those lots, which were formerly R O. The identifies R N for the dimensional requirements. To meet the dimensional requirement. Have been more compatible with the actual structures. Any concerns about that? That's it. Back to you, Ted.
Okay. So that's it. If there's no more questions on chapter one thirty four, I'll stop the share on that.
Again?
Okay. Did you want me to briefly go over the E A F?
Yes, please.
Okay. We do share on that. Okay, um, so the document that was uploaded to the village's website now. This is the seeker full environmental assessment form, which is required for type one actions, which the board. Declare itself lead agency and classified the action as type one, I believe, at a meeting back in April of this year. And so this document serves as both the assessment of potential environmental impacts of the action. As well as the determination of significance, which is a necessary prerequisite for the village board. To adopt before considering adoption of the chapter one thirty four amendments. So this document, it's simply identifies the village board of trustees at a lead agency, the date that it was fully compiled. Because it consists of three different parts. Who prepared it? And that would be me, which are the interested agencies that the village board circulated to as part of the process of. Identifying other agencies with interest in this, and these include. Other agencies in in Putnam County as well as Orange County because of the way that the notification requirements for zoning amendments have to be filed. And the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation. Due not only to the National Register of Historic Places and National Landmark. Landmarks that exist within the village, but also the close proximity of New York State Parks to the village. They were also notified of the lead agency. So this is, for the most part, unchanged. This is the part one E A F. And this describes the project and the setting of the project. It begins with an identification of the action. The project location, a brief description of the action. Contact information and so forth. Then it goes into what are the government approvals that are necessary for it? There is only one approval. There is only one agency that has the ability to be able to. Adopt and file amendments to the zoning law, and that is the village board of trustees. But it does recognize that the village planning board has an advisory review in common capacity. And Putnam County Department of Planning. And Transportation does have an advisory role under. Section two thirty nine L and M of general municipal law, and they have completed their review. They were forwarded. The updated document and have now found that the proposed chapter one thirty four amendments do not have. Any intermunicipal or county-wide concerns, and therefore they have issued an affirmative. Not an approval, but an affirmative review of chapter one thirty four. Um, the rest of this. Let's see. There is also information that has to be provided in here about whether or not the villages within any special planning district. Let's see. Uh, what are the zoning districts that's identified? The comprehensive amendment, the school district, the police, you know, uh, basic information that has to be provided. Most of this document. Applies to site-specific land developments, and so sections D and E are not applicable. Okay, so I'm going to scroll through here.
For a, for a local law zoning change, you mean?
They are not, they are not applicable to policies or enactment of of regulations or local laws. There is verification that's required. This will require the mayor's signature as certifying that the information is true. It's dated today. Then. The part two is the identification of potential impacts. This was originally done back in April, April twentieth. There have been no changes to this part two E A F. And this goes through a series of questions that evaluates whether or not the proposed action will have an impact on land. The question, the answer is no. Geological features, surface water. Groundwater, these are all issues that are typically. Checked, yes, when there is a land development project proposed, but because this is a policymaking document, a regulatory document. It is not going to have an effect on things like development in a designated roadway. Or an impact on air, impact on plants and animals, or impact on agricultural resources. Aesthetic resources. However. In response to the question, will it have an impact on historical resources? The question is whether the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. And the answer to that is absolutely yes. The village not only has a local historic district, but the National Register. Uh, district within the village as well as individual. Buildings and sites that have been designated on the National Register of Historic Places. There's also one national historic landmark within the village. So this did need to be evaluated, and this asks questions such as whether the proposed action. May occur wholly or partially within, you know, buildings that have been listed. Yeah, and so will it have an effect? And the answer is no. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated sensitive for archaeological sites. We know that because there have been significant archaeological investigations that have been conducted within the village. However, this is not going to affect any archaeological sites directly. Proposed action may occur wholly or partially within archaeological sites, not included in the New York State inventory, and it's safest to at least check that is no or a small impact. There will be no land development activities occurring in in association with the adoption of the zoning amendments. So that is about it as far as the part two E A F. None of the other thresholds that are listed here for any of the other. Topics that are required to be evaluated as part of the impact analysis. None of these will have an impact to the extent where. The action may cause an increase in in any form of energy. And as you know, of chapter one thirty four amendments are designed to decrease. The use of energy in any form. So this just takes you through the the rest of the questions. Such as consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. Chapter one thirty four has been designed to be consistent with adopted land use plans, so that answer that question is no. Consistency with community character. Again, the proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. That also is a no because the chapter one thirty four amendments have been designed to be consistent with the existing community character in an effort to. Protect Cold Springs community character, and that has been emphasized over and over again in the chapter one thirty four amendments. So here's where we get into a little bit more detail as far as the evaluation of the magnitude. And importance of project impacts and determination of significance. This is updated to today's date. And this form includes a reference to see the attached seeker part three environmental assessment form continuation sheet. Dated as last revised on June twenty one, twenty twenty three. This is the determination of significance. The seeker status is type one, which is how the village board classified the action when. When you adopted the resolution to declare yourself lead agency. On information reported on the C A F, as noted, plus this additional support information. Cold Spring Comprehensive Plan, Cold Spring Water, Local Waterfront Realization Strategy. The proposed chapter one thirty four amendments and other additional supporting documents identified in the part three A F, and I'll get into that in in just a moment. Considering the magnitude and importance of each identified potential impact, it is the conclusion of the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees as lead agency. And then this box has been checked. This project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment. And therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared accordingly. This negative declaration is issued. So this is where the environmental assessment form also acts as a negative declaration, which is a. Affirmative declaration that the project will have no significant adverse impacts on the environment. Okay, yes.
Can I say this another way to make sure that it's clear to me and everyone else?
Yes.
When we are adopting zoning. The action of adopting the zoning itself does not have environmental impact. Obviously. Change, development that follows on. Could potentially have impact, and those impacts would be assessed with individual proposals. Right, as a, as a proposal comes forward, it would undergo. Seeker and and they're all the own, the project itself would have its own findings of. Significance and impact. So the, the logic here is that the act of adopting the code does not have environmental impact. Is that correct?
That's correct. In in this case, not every zoning law. Will result in a finding that there are no significant adverse impacts, which is why many communities will go through an environmental impact statement process. But in the case of Cold Spring and the adoption of chapter one thirty four. Number one, you have been following the recommendations of the village's comprehensive plan, which. Did go through its own seeker review process and a seeker negative declaration was also. Adopted by the village board in two thousand eleven, I believe, before the adoption of the comprehensive plan. So that was also scrutinized from a seeker standpoint. But yes, as far as anything that comes after the code amendments are adopted. That's the responsibility of any other agency that has an approval responsibility. For a land use change, and that would be a site plan, a special use permit, a subdivision request within the village. And the planning board in those cases would be responsible for conducting a seeker review of what are the potential significant adverse impacts on the environment. That could result as a result of of a application for a specific site-specific. Project that may affect the land and water and community resources and and may not be consistent with a comprehensive plan. May not be consistent with the community character. So that is something that is then handled by the planning board. And the village board will have no, you know, no further work under seeker as far as that's concerned.
Jonathan, do you have anything to add to that?
I would just reiterate that, you know, any subsequent project that's developed under the proposed proposed zoning code, if adopted, will still be. Subject to secret, you know, just as Ted said, so this in no way, you know, presumes. That any future projects, you know, will or will not have any fact. This is just for the the adoption of. This is just for the the adoption of the code.
Under what scenario, it's just for complete clarity on the record. Under what kinds of scenarios are positive declarations made in zoning amendments?
Well, just to, to use one example, um, Ted spoke a minute ago about how uh the proposed code is consistent with uh the existing community character. But if, for example, the board wanted to adopt a code, you know, that zoned um Main Street as heavy industrial, well, then you might have a positive impact because now the proposed zoning is totally inconsistent with the existing community character. That's obviously an extreme example, but just to kind of uh, uh, you know, give an easy one.
Yeah.
Departures, right?
Right, right.
Yes, and I think, you know, to give another example, and I think that's a good example, Jonathan. But I think another example is a situation where an applicant has requested a zoning change to enable a different form of development than is um permitted by the zoning. Um, and in that case, there is a need not only to change the zoning, but also to change the comprehensive plan. Um, and I've seen this happen with um other um applications where a developer comes in uh and wishes to change the code so that they have um um a development that they are capable of providing, but it's not permitted by the uh by the zoning. And uh, so in that case, um, there may be a positive declaration issue because it requires a change in the comprehensive plan. So it has to be looked at very carefully uh to avoid spot zoning, which is generally illegal in New York State. Um, so it does happen. Um, sometimes there are uh communities that uh completely change their their zoning. You know, we've talked about forum-based zoning. I can give you some examples of uh forum-based zoning that have um have been adopted through the environmental impact statement process. Portchester in Westchester County, for instance, they took forum-based zoning and applied it to the entire village of Portchester. Uh, they decided that it was um prudent to be able to go through the environmental impact statement process because it was a completely different way of uh reviewing applications within the village. Um, Chappaqua in North Castle, they did the same thing. They went through the environmental impact statement process uh because of a whole new forum-based code um that they wanted to apply um within that town. So it does happen. Um, uh, you know, uh, I know in my own town, town of Rhinebeck, uh, they were adopting a new comprehensive plan, a new zoning law and a wetlands local law all at the same time. And they decided that uh they wanted to be able to uh be as transparent as possible about what the effects were going to be on the environment. So they went through the environmental impact statement process. Um, not that there would be um significant adverse impacts, but they felt that was one way to be able to present the information. In this case, um, I think the um, the village board, the working group, the code update committee have been very carefully looking at the comprehensive plan and making sure that the um proposed changes to chapter one thirty four um uh faithfully um um employ the policies that were uh suggested as part of the comprehensive plan process. Um, and I believe that's one of the um, um, one of the uh areas within the part three environmental assessment form that has been described in detail to demonstrate how the comprehensive plan uh policies and recommendations have been transplant uh translated into changes to the chapter one thirty four amendments.
Okay, let's get into it.
Okay. So this is the um, chapter one thirty four amendments, the part three environmental assessment form. This is called the continuation sheet. This was originally prepared April twenty fifth. It was revised on May tenth as a result of um uh an initial uh uh wave of comments that came in um from the earliest part of the public hearing process. And it has now been revised um based upon additional public comment that has been um developed um since that time. Um, it also um uh some of the changes that were made to this document between May tenth and and June twenty first have to do with um simply making proper reference to many of the quotations that were um uh taken in here where I mentioned before that um the negative declaration is based upon the village board's review of the comprehensive plan, the local waterfront revitalization strategy, uh, the chapter one thirty four amendments themselves and additional supporting information. That information has now been properly uh cited in cases where um this part three E A F has relied upon things such as the recommendations of the American Planning Association or the National Parking Association. Uh, these are, uh, there were specific references in the comprehensive plan, for instance, to the section on parking that said that uh the village should revise the parking regulations to more realistically um uh provide um uh generation factors that um are uh would try and reduce the number of parking spaces that are required from the existing code. Um, and uh, and that recommendation specifically cited the recommendations of the American Planning Association and the National Parking Association. And so those um citations have now been um specified within this document so that anyone that wanted to research this further and find out, well, what is the original source document say? Will now have a full reference in this document so they can go back and uh and better comprehend, you know, maybe why the American Planning Association recommends that um parking standards be reduced um across the board. Um, other than that, um, you know, there have been updates that have been made to chapter one thirty four. There are sections within this environmental assessment form that um uh uh made reference to specific sections of the zoning, some of those had to be changed. Um, there were, um, and I think we've gone over this before. There were some sections of the build-out analysis that were made. But most of um the information in here is uh a very detailed description of why the um the proposed adoption of the uh amendments to chapter one thirty four will not have a significant impact on the environment. So it's a supporting document that lays out the rationale for the choices that have been made um in the document that you have in front of you today. And so it begins with an introduction to the part three E A F that talks about the setting of Cold Spring. Um, it has uh quotations from the comprehensive plan um that are relevant to um, you know, to the village's setting. And as you can see, um, this is the way the the reference uh has been made. For anyone that wants to see the context of this paragraph can go to the comprehensive plan on page eight and see um uh that uh to get a greater understanding of this, all right? Um. Let's see. The um, most of the rest of this is going to be a lot of, a lot of text. There's fifty-eight pages total. I'm not going to take you through and repeat this whole thing. Um, but I do um encourage you to to go through this to make sure that you are comfortable with the um with the language in here, that the rationales are consistent with your understanding of uh the chapter one thirty four amendments. Um, and certainly if any one of the village board members see anything in here um that should be uh further elaborated on or changed in any way, please let me know. Um, uh, you know, this document can be changed literally up to the time that you adopt it. Um, and so, um, you know, it it should be reflective of the discussions and of the um, the deliberations that the village board has had on all of the issues that are provided. Um, this section discusses then the potential environmental impacts. Uh, and this takes you through um the whole process of how the village came about appointing the comprehensive plan, local waterfront revitalization plan special board in two thousand six, takes you through the history of this, how the public was engaged in the development of the comprehensive plan to reach a consensus on what is the vision for Cold Springs future? What are the policies that will um will move us um squarely into a position where we want to be at this point? Um, it's taken a long time to get here, um, you know, more than ten years. But a lot of that had to do with the need for um for applying for funding from New York State to assist with the process. Uh, and in fact, this chapter one thirty four has been driven by uh in large part by the NYSERDA grant that was given to the village to update its uh its code. Um, and so that has been a long process in coming. Um, and the village doesn't have any staff, any planning staff. It's it's made up of volunteers who give their own time, uh, their own free time um to the betterment of the village of Cold Spring. And it simply took a long time to be able to get to this point. But we're at an end point now, um, where this um uh proposed zoning um will now be consistent with what the village residents want. Um, and uh, this discusses all of the different potential impacts. Uh, the first one on impact on historic and archaeological resources. And it reviews the um, the language from chapter one thirty four and how these um uh how the new provisions such as the planned mixed-use district, the purpose is to provide appropriately scaled concept, context-sensitive redevelopment of the marathon site through the authorization of planned unit development. Um, and it discusses specifically how that relates to historic and archaeological resources. Um, it discusses uh the sorts of of provisions that have been incorporated into the P M U district uh and how these relate to things like, uh, for instance, the Village of Cold Springs Historic District Design Standards that have recently been adopted by the Historic District Review Board. Um. And how numerous other features of this um have been designed to protect um those cultural resources within the village that are most important to the village residents. There's a whole section here that discusses the potential impacts on the comprehensive plan and community character. Uh, essentially, uh, why the suburban-style zoning that was created in nineteen uh sixty-seven um uh was determined to be in need of updating. Um, and there's a whole section here that quotes from the comprehensive plan. So again, this refers the reader back to where the comprehensive plan had this particular discussion. Um, and then, you know, things like this, where in response to the above policy and the comprehensive plan, this is how chapter one thirty men uh amendments accomplish the policy that was established in the comprehensive plan. Uh, you know, they they eliminate the R one district and replace with a new residential district with three sub-districts. So that gives you a sense of the kind of of um topics that are discussed in here. Um. Let's see. More details on the sub-districts, calibrating the village's table of dimensional standards to what exists and I'm sorry, did somebody say something?
No, coughing, sorry.
Oh, okay. Um, calibrating the village's table of dimensional standards to what exists, correcting ambiguities in the zoning law and so forth. Um, let's see. What else?
Those.
Um, how, um, you know, the I one district and also the I two district as well. And that's also noted in here um that that allows for a variety of uses that um the village has established a policy uh that's pretty clear to um uh to ensure that businesses provide local jobs and so forth. But also at a scale that respects the village's small-town character and the primary needs of residents year-round. Um, and uh, so, you know, there's a policy here. We've had a discussion about big-box stores and some commenters have said, you know, we can't do that because of franchise operations. But the village uh uh comprehensive plan does talk about big-box stores and to set side limits to prohibit big-box stores, uh, which would currently be permitted within the I one zone on the marathon site, as was pointed out in the build-out analysis.
It's subsequent to Ted, just for clarity, subsequent to the adoption of the comprehensive plan, uh, formula business law was established.
Yes, that's correct. And this simply reinforces it with the removal of the I one district and the replacement with the other districts uh on the marathon site. With that, uh, some of the other areas in the village that were also zoned for I one have been converted to residential or to park um and so forth. Uh, let's see. The rest is pretty much a description of all the other sections of the zoning and how these are um designed to ensure that um new development will um will reduce impacts rather than cause new or additional um environmental impacts. Uh, let's see. It does talk about the, how the density was determined for the P M U district. There's a whole section on this that describes it. And then it does get into the build-out analysis, which we've already gone through previously. Uh, there have been no changes to the build-out analysis other than to ensure that all of the assumptions that were made, all of the sources and then information that were used in calculating the actual uh build-out table, that these are all now embedded within the part three environmental assessment form. And there's also a subsection here that also discusses parking um because of the um um, you know, redefining how parking um numbers are um arrived at through the, through the zoning law. What's the support? You know, this is what I was talking about before. Comprehensive plan recommends relying on the standards of the American Planning Association, National Parking Association for developing new parking standards. Um, and so this provides citations to um the Amer- uh American Planning Association. Uh, you know, those specific ones, a business case for dropping parking minimums. Um, gives examples of other cities in New York State that have dropped parking minimums. Uh, talks about um uh some of the um reasons why the Parking Reform Network uh believes that um um parking uh space requirements are excessive in most communities and have very little, if any, um justification. Um, they simply were copied from one community to another in the past, and nobody really knows where a lot of the numbers came from originally. Um, and then, you know, what are some of the benefits of reducing the parking requirements? Um, so it does talk about that. Affordable housing, um, it starts with a reference to um a recent uh report of the New York State Comptroller's Office about housing affordability in New York State uh and the need for affordable housing, um, how the village uh has not established a formal incentive zoning program or any other sort of enough um uh required uh affordable housing program. But the village has taken a softer approach um to um establish a variety of different uh measures within the zoning that remove barriers to affordable housing, uh, to make Cold Spring a more inclusive community. Uh, and this simply recites, you know, all of the different instances in the zoning in amendments, chapter one thirty four amendments uh that are designed to, well, in design in part, in any case, to um uh to make new housing more affordable, um, whether it's an accessory apartment and a single-family um dwelling or an accessory dwelling, um, and a whole bunch of other things. So finally, uh, the E A F concludes with um the uh seeker regulations criteria for determining significance. This is one of the factors that um is used in um determining whether or not to issue a negative declaration or a positive declaration. Um, and what I can do is um, if you want, I can just spend five minutes reading what these criteria are. And if it would be useful to you, I think you can get a sense from a a reading of this criteria uh that the proposed one thirty four amendments will not exceed any of the criteria for uh making a positive declaration.
I think that's helpful.
Okay, to determine whether a proposed type one or, and I I recognize that nobody's going to be able to read this probably uh there at village hall. To determine whether a proposed type one or unlisted action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment. The impacts that may be reasonably expected to result from the proposed action must be compared against the criteria in this subdivision. And this is subdivision uh six seventeen point seven C of the seeker regulations. The following list is illustrative, not exhaustive. These criteria are considered indicators of significant adverse impacts on the environment. Uh, number one, a substantial adverse change in existing air quality, ground or surface water quality or quantity, traffic or noise levels, a substantial increase in solid waste production, a substantial increase in potential for erosion, flooding, leaching, or drainage problems. Two, removal or destruction of large quantities of vegetation or fauna, substantial interference with the movement of any resident or migratory fish or wildlife species, impacts on a significant habitat area, substantial adverse impacts on a threatened or endangered species of animal or plant or the habitat of such a species, or other significant adverse impacts to natural resources. Three, the impairment of the environmental characteristics of a critical environmental area. And that's not applicable because there are no critical environmental areas within the village. Or the creation of a material conflict with a community's current plans or goals as officially approved or adopted. And that goes back to whether or not your zoning is consistent with your comprehensive plan. And it has been designed specifically to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Five, the impairment of the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources or of existing community or neighborhood character. Six, a major change in the use of either the quantity or type of energy. Seven, the creation of a hazard to human health. Eight, a substantial change in the use or intensity of use of land, including agricultural, open space or recreational resources, or in its capacity to support existing uses. Nine, the encouraging or attracting of a large number of people to a place or places for more than a few days compared to the number of people who would come to such place absent the action. Ten, the creation of a material demand for other actions that would result in one or in one of the above consequences. Eleven, changes in two or more elements of the environment, no one of which has a significant impact on the environment, but when considered together, result in a substantial adverse impact on the environment, or twelve, two or more related actions undertaken, funded, or approved by an agency, none of which has or would have a significant impact on the environment, but when considered cumulatively would meet one or more of the criteria in this subdivision. So these are the kinds of criteria that is normally required to be reviewed for any action that's subject to seeker. So that would include not only actions like adoption of zoning amendments, but also the planning board or the zoning board. Whenever they're conducting a review of a site-specific action under seeker would also have to review this criteria and make a determination to issue either a negative declaration or a positive declaration. So that's the criteria, and that's the conclusion of the environmental assessment form, all fifty eight pages of the part three EAF and that additional thirty some pages. Well, twenty-five to thirty pages of the part one and part two forms.
Who's left?
That's it.
Thank you very much, Ted.
Welcome.
So our homework as a board is to read those fifty-eight pages in the form. Raise any concerns that you may have, any, anything that you want to discuss with Ted or Jonathan this evening. Nope. Okay. So we'll move into the public comment portion. Should we get our timer warmed up? Please. So as that's stated in the past, and just going to reiterate that parameters, comments will be respectful and polite that relate to the code topics under discussion. Questions and comments that can contribute to the public process and make for a better final product are welcome. There will be no ad hominem or other attacks, no speculation or fear mongering, no rudeness. This is the warning. If you can't regulate yourself to participate within these parameters, you'll be asked to leave. Speakers will have three minutes. No extensions. You can't say it in three minutes. You're welcome to put it in in writing. So is there anyone online who wishes to make a comment? Is that a hand up or is that your pointer check? Anyone in the room? I think I recognize the speaker, Michael Resman, Resman, please.
Resman, thank you. Let me just step my own. Thank you. Michael Resman, thirty Rock Street. You know, I am exercising my rights under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution to comment on public matters and also to seek redress for grievances. So just to put y'all on notice. The number one, in its June fourteenth responses, the village board acknowledged that accessory apartments would be allowed at the marathon site for single-family lots. Therefore, the proposed PMU at Marathon could allow up to an additional twenty-five dwellings for a total of at least eighty-eight. That's the sixty-three that are in the build-out analysis, as noted in the current EAF, plus forty percent of sixty-three as each of the four types of housing, one of those types can total forty percent. That's how I got to the number of eighty-eight. This is a far greater number of dwelling units than even at the Butterfield side for to get our spring group and would be the equivalent of adding a large development to an area with one public street in and one public street out essentially. And it's also eight times the number of dwelling units allowed under current zoning. I submit to y'all that this expressly violates comprehensive plan policy seven point two point two. And note that this will all be marked at the house. First question on this topic. Will the EAF be updated to reflect the potential total of eighty-eight housing units? If not, why not? Second question, can the PMU be revised to prohibit accessory apartments? If not, why not? My second comment relates to a comment in the question responses that the development process at Marathon be insulated from public influence. There's a a reference to political machinations as the reason why the planning board, not the village board, should consider applications. I would submit to you that in considering this very detailed PUD for the Marathon site that is embodied in one thirty-four twelve, the board and the mayor in particular have already been subject to influence from the Marathon site owner, Mr. Sean Carney, with whom the mayor has had a prior business relationship. I'm not going to go into all these details as I don't have time. They are in some of the responses, and I would ask you, to the extent that Mr. Carney has been a campaign contributor contributor to the mayor's campaign. Well, we can, we can, we can discuss that offline, but
No, if you're going to raise it in public comment, I'm responding. That is not true.
Okay, I will send you a letter right after.
You can send all the letters you want. The public record reflects that that statement is not true.
I will send you a letter that shows a screenshot.
What do you have left? All my pub, all my campaign finances, public record.
Where is the check? Show us the check. Who wrote the check?
What chair? What? It's all public record. You go to the
There is a filing at this Sean Carney period.
In my campaign finance.
Okay.
Twenty-four seconds.
You can see my letter. I am asking the mayor right now to recuse herself from this decision and also to, for this relates to the people on the code update committee that they commit to, pardon me, that the ad hoc committee that they commit to not taking future work from relating to development at Marathon because of their involvement in this process.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Marie, do you look as if you're ready?
Yes. The page numbers, the new chapter one thirty-four. Some of my comments and questions in June fourteen have not been addressed in the June twenty-first version of chapter one thirty-four, such as the comment that there's a filling station in the B one district, but the table of uses does not permit a filling station B one. When will they be addressed? In other chapters, the code, when there was a definition, each time the defined word for is used in the text of that chapter, chapter, the defined word for phrase has capitalized first letter. Ted commented on this last week. As recommended by Ted last week, dimension should be found in the text of the chapter, not just in a definition, as is the case with one thirty-four dash two B with access accessory structure. One thirty-four dash six J two, there is no one thirty-four dash seven C five. One thirty-four seventy-two, there are no graphic standards. One thirty-four seventy-four, this is not like our dash oh. Where will winter parking be located currently along the Boulevard at Campbell Avenue? As Marathon, Marathon has built out as proposed. One thirty-four sixteen C seven, this says the U shall be consistent with the village's comprehensive plan, design standards. This section is about the planning board issuing special use permits. It should be safe to assume that the table of uses identifies as SU. Only those districts uses which are consistent with village's comprehensive plan, design standard. If that is the case, what purposes one thirty-four dash sixteen C seven serve? There appear to be twenty-five residential R lots. Of these twenty-five, eleven do not have the required with what lift, what width, depth, or spot size from the table of dimension requirement. Three lots are vacant. An additional three lots have their principal structures erected after nineteen eighty-five. Many of the homes on these logs are not visible from a village street. At least three of these lots are more than one family. Given all of this, how does the RL district conform to what is stated in one thirty-four dash seven C three? What is the value of having an RL district? In the definition of accessory use, home professional offices is not identified in the table of use. In the definition of area building, should accessory structures be included in calculating the two total area? The first one thirty-four dash two, the phrase professional office is not identified in the table of uses. One thirty-four dash two, the phrase setback area minimum is not used in the text. One thirty-four day seventy-six, should the title be accessory building and accessory structures? One twenty-four dash seventy-six B, the first sentence should state all accessory buildings have accessory structures. One thirty-four seventy-six B, the second sentence should state then two accessory buildings and accessory structures. One thirty-four seventy-eight, should the phrase is made non-conforming be deleted? One thirty-four dash ten E four, should the R district be expanded to?
Thank you. But anyone else in the room like to make a comment? Mr. Pew?
Okay, Rock Street.
Number Rock Street, Mr. Pew? Thank you.
Change to large lots allowing you to or collecting the three-story buildings. I failed to mention the height requirement. And feet did change to match the three stories. I recommend the height and feet requirely changed to reflect the height of three stories and the structures. I also recommend to review the entire diaphragm consistency between stories and feet. Many of the promises made by the board have not been provided, such as a list of projects, current those zoning questions have been asked. Our responses do not answer the questions asked, questions have been asked, and yet not answered at all. Last week, we early raised about sixty concerns and questions. Why it has another sixty? Answered questions. Based on public comments and questions, I have gathered chapter one thirty-four revised on May fourteenth contain an average of over two and a half errors per page. Revision on June fourteenth appears to about two errors per page on average. I don't know about one, it was at least today around in the afternoon. I have that chat through it. I do note that a number of the recently made corrections, changes, edits have created new errors in the document. There's a lot of lot more work to be done, so we're in the publication. I request the board thoroughly answer all the questions that have been asked, provide the materials they promised and provide stable product about the chapter one thirty-four. And once everything provided, allow the community to report from that point. The public and comments.
Well, that's well done you. I would like to make a motion to close the oral public comment at this public hearing. Second, shall I favor? Okay, I would like also to make a motion to close the written comment by noon tomorrow at Thursday. So if anyone has written comments that likes to do, and you can put them in by noon. Tomorrow, is it acceptable to board members? All in favor?
Hi.
Can we move my camera back? So no code is perfect to human product. There have been a lot of revisions in this document. I can assure you that all of us as trustees know that working with previously crafted codes, there are errors in other codes. Sometimes you don't find them until you're using the code. All right, they don't, they're not identified until the code is in use. So this is a level best attempt on the part of neighbors and community members to make a significant update to a chapter that was introduced in nineteen sixty-seven and does not match the physical quality of this village. If you'd like to have a conversation, you're welcome to step out. So we have ZBAs for the purpose with zoning boards of appeals for the purpose of they're empowered to enforce, but they're also empowered to interpret and to recommend revision. At some point, you have to take a vote. This code has been in process since two thousand and six. It's not going to be perfect. But at some point, the process needs to close because the village has reached a state of analysis paralysis. And I think it's fairly clear why it has taken nine full years of working on the code update and the process is not finished. We're coming to finish. So we are not voting this evening, but we are closing the public comment portion. And the board is going to be spending time with the documents that have been prepared. So what happens next is this, the consulting planner will review public comment to determine if any recommendations are substantive. Consult with the ad hoc working group if needed. We will schedule a time to meet with the board to propose, to review any proposed modification. And when the board, this board of trustees, the legislative body determines that the documentation is ready, their review, our review is sufficient, and our questions and comments have been addressed. motions can be entertained to consider the EAF, a secret declaration, and the text of the chapters. We are working hard to meet the Nicerda deadline. I recommend we schedule a special session on Monday, June twenty-sixth at four P M. So that if Ted's ready, he can present to the board. How does that work? That works. Jonathan, are you available then?
Oh, yeah, I should be.
Okay, Ted?
Yeah, if I'm not, then John first will be, one of the two of us will be.
I'll be, yes, I'll be available up until seven P M. On on Monday.
Okay, so if the court would please notice that session or Monday at four P M. Go ahead.
Someone needs to make a motion and second it and have a vote on that.
For the, to hold the meeting at that time?
Correct.
I make a motion to hold a session on Monday June twenty-sixth for the purpose of continued conversation and consideration of the EAF, the secret declaration and the text of chapters one oh four, seventy-six and one thirty-four. All in favor? Any host? Hey, would you please notice it quick? Make a motion to return. Second, all in favor?
Good night, everyone. See you Monday.